All right, it's April 4th, 2023, 7:30 PM. Going to call the arraignment meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present in myself, John T. Hand, Bob Shabat is not here yet. Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Vegas and I'll be showing up shortly. Joe Hall, I'll see Bill Benel for Bob Shabat and Michael Johansson will be with us tonight. All right, applications for receipt. PZ dash twenty-three dash eight, special permit renewal, section fifteen excavation sand and gravel, zero River Road. MBL oh two five dash zero zero two dash zero zero owner Desi Otto Sand and Gravel Corporation. Application L four G O. That's just receipt.
Yep, and it's a one year request, so we won't be doing it probably again next month.
Mr. Shabat's here, so then, so I guess you're just along the ride tonight. Okay, so tonight I have the public hearing. PZ dash twenty-three dash seven applicant home occupation for small engine repair at ninety-two Ruby Road owner applicant Sean Gannon. Sir, you want to tell us a little bit about?
Well, I mean, it's going to be quiet respectfully. I know a lot of people who do small repair shops around.
Oh, first of all, you got to state your name. That's okay. I let it get past me at first. Go ahead.
Sean Gannon.
Okay, go ahead. Just tell us, carry on.
Okay, it's not going to be junkyard. I'm not doing sales. I'm not scavenging machines and parts because I won't put a huge part in some machine that can repair. So it's always going to be kept clean because it reminds my home. I don't want it to look like crap anyway. Operation hours, I usually don't fire anything up until at least eight, nine o'clock in the morning to make sure that they're doing whatever they're doing. I usually stop firing. I usually stop running anything around three or four o'clock. I try to be done by then. I don't want to work non here. So it's never really, I don't want to interfere with the piece of the building, so to speak. And basically, it's going to be either I go pick up the machines when they get dropped off. Probably one or two customers at a time at most, hearing, drop it off, tell them what they should do now, and then they go pick it up. Time to pick it up. It's not going to be a lot of traffic, not going to be a lot of parking, none of that.
I see this picture here. The garage is around the back of the property, so this, this is right here.
Actually in the house.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yes, right here. All right. What do you estimate? How many pieces of equipment will be stored outside at any time?
Three, four, maybe, but it doesn't fit any ground. I'll tell you, you're going to have to wait.
You're just keeping small amounts of fuel and oil and so forth?
Fuel's never in the bill, ever. I keep my gas when you out behind the building because that's kind of where it's more heated. I keep it out, so I keep it out. I don't want the fuel in the house at all. Oil, yeah, that's just usually I buy what I need for the machines that are there. Store a whole pot of oil or anything like that. I'll start to have a couple cans of penetrate the oil and things briefly.
Get your oil like for the crank cases and everything that's involved or just like?
No, I just buy what's necessary for the machine, one, two quarts at a time, five quarts at a time. And then I just take the new stuff, put it back in the empty containers and probably move it to the transfer bin.
Questions from the commission?
Parts delivery, Andy Mark, how do you get your parts delivered? Just order them online?
Yeah, usually UPS and RSPS. I'm a second day local, I'm a self.
What are the typical types of equipment that serves?
Most common is riding lawnmowers, the white mowers. The occasional screwdriver, once in a while, have an ATV get dropped off. Chainsaws, maybe. Not a lot. I don't get a lot of two-stroke stuff. Because when it comes down to it, honestly, to repair a two-stroke, it's better to replace it because cost-wise it makes more sense. So most people, you know, when they buy a homeowner grant, so you pay a hundred, twenty dollars for a home vehicle store or whatever. You bring it to me and the bill's going to be a hundred. Most of them just like, excuse me, I'm. So I get a few. I won't admit, I won't say none. I'll get a few, but not a lot.
Any other questions or comments? All right, online, any questions or comments? John, you're good? You're muted. Okay, I guess he's good. All right, we'll open it up to the public.
Sorry, I was muted.
You got anything, John? All right. Anything for the public? Go ahead, state your name.
Sherilyn Foster, eighty-eight Ruby Road, neighbor.
Yeah.
Could I just hear a reiteration of the hours again? Is it Monday through Friday?
Pretty much. I try to keep my weekends open. Maybe on a Saturday, it might seem like they're up some, some off. I actually don't go to work anytime compared to my call.
Can I continue?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know the protocol. The testing of the equipment, is that going to be done on the weekends or is it just through that?
No, just thirty hours of operation.
Would be Monday through Friday?
Pretty much.
And the ATVs, may I assume that those would be tested up into the backyard?
Yeah, that area is, yeah.
And that wouldn't be on the weekend?
No, the only time you're going to see your weekend.
I think for us, it's the noise factor because we're right next door and we're there for quiet. That's why we moved to Wilmington. So I'm respecting a small business need, but I just don't want to be impacted by business noise in the neighborhood.
No, we understand that. If you tell them there's a commitment here from eight AM to six PM.
Yeah.
So the most, where you obviously, if you need to do your own lawn or something, that's another story. But testing equipment all day long on Saturday or Sunday, what's going to?
No, I wouldn't do that. And I usually don't test all day long. Sometimes I run them for, depending on the equipment, five, ten minutes just to make sure it's good and that's it. I show them down.
Other, other questions, comments from the public? Anything?
Actually, mine were handled by either one of you or them.
Okay.
And his explanation, so I'm fine.
It's always the same concerns with, no, isn't it disrupting?
We don't want to.
I don't want to. We like the peaceful environment as well.
Any further questions?
I think the driveway is wide for cars coming and going, you know, one or two extra cars in the driveway. It's not, it's not an issue. I know that as well. So, no, I.
As long as this is handled respectfully, there shouldn't be a problem.
Like that, no, I understand. No, and that's with this small engine, the noise is, is the main concern.
I understand indeed, your small engine.
Absolutely as well. I want to be respectful with the sound. I want to be sure I don't need one. I like to play it too, you know.
Okay, so anyone online have anything? Make a motion that we close public hearing, PZ dash twenty-three dash seven. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Which brings us immediately into new business of PZ dash twenty-three dash seven. For the home occupation for small engine repair at ninety-two Ruby Road.
Discussion?
Only that I heard the hours of operation probably Monday through Friday, Friday. Eight to five, eight to six. Unreasonable, so. Okay, that falls in with our other noise ordinances and everything else.
Okay.
That'll probably be part of the motion.
No, that would be very, Monday through Friday, hours of operation. Someone want to take a stab at that motion?
Can I just, I typed it up as you're saying. So just going based upon the statement of use, I don't think we need to condition that it's pointing only because his narrative says that it is. He includes, but I think you could also consider a condition that storage of equipment and parts shall be within a building. I mean, it's stated in there, but I think it would be good to include because it kind of lines up with what we've done elsewhere. For your discussion about hours, hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday at AM, six PM. I have in your, you could consider excluding drop off. So if somebody wanted to drop something off on a weekend, they could, but there would be no other operation. Just, I want to make sure we clarify what we consider operation.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's probably makes sense. I mean, a lot of people can't do things during the week, so. Yeah, Saturday is a drop off day.
Yeah. Oil and gas shall be disposed of properly off site. And I'm not sure on the worrying, but kind of getting to the discussion. There shall be no unnecessary idling, testing, or repetitive engine revving of equipment not owned by the property owner. I don't know if that gets exactly to it, but this idea of having a vehicle out there that you're just perpetitively running and idling and revving and testing, you know, over a significant period of time, unnecessary is kind of a tricky word, but I'm not, I think that kind of speaks to what we kind of were hearing. But anyways, just.
Always fix an engine, you have to test.
Yeah.
Like.
Would excessive be a better word? No excessive idling or revving or?
You're going to have to solve for an hour to pop, you know, that's, that's a different story than that.
Or a two-stroke dirt bike. Which I know is not predominantly what the target is here. I'm just thinking for consistency. I can, and this is just food for thought, but I can swap out unnecessary for excessive. It's still somewhat subjective, but you know, I think it puts us in a position where if there are issues that come up, we had a little bit of something to look at because our regs don't really speak to that. It's all.
All right, so do we have that motion craft to bring it up?
I can't bring it up. It's a different computer, but I can read there again. And you can include which ones you, it makes sense. So the first one was that all storage shall be within a building. There shall be no outdoor storage of equipment or parts.
Is that reasonable though? If you have several lawnmowers, does it have enough room to put them all inside?
The.
I can't tell. I don't know what's in his garage. I understand.
I can, that should be within.
Square feet.
I can add or not visible from a public way.
That seems, that seems.
It should be in a building.
I'm just thinking, somebody Saturday, everybody's doing their lawns and all breaks down. They break four machines in.
Yeah.
It's like, why, yeah, come on inside right now. That seems tough.
So if they're behind the building or a place in the backyard where they can't be seen.
I, I think that that is, yeah.
There shall be no excessive idling, testing, or repetitive engine revving equipment not owned by the property owner. Hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday at six PM, excluding customer drop off only. And oil and gas shall be disposed of properly off site. Those are the ones that we reviewed.
Are you got all that on your screen? Maybe I'll say nice to you. Okay, going to make a motion to approve PZ dash twenty-three dash seven, the application for home occupation for small engine repair. And ninety-two Ruby Road owner applicant Sean Gannon, with the conditions, all storage shall be within a building or not visible from a public way. There shall be no excessive idling, testing, or repetitive engine revving of equipment not owned by the property owner. Hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM, excluding customer drop off only. Oil and gas shall be disposed of properly off site. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A little bit of that going on. This works out. I mean, I. I wrote, I'm impressed.
Yeah, I will take.
Yeah. It would have been, it would have been.
Thank you.
It went out. I do hear, I do not hear someone. They do water. Yeah, really?
Yeah. It's probably two miles away.
Oh, and you tried to get across the lake. I see that. You said it wrong.
Yeah, all right. All right, so no unfinished business tonight. Prove of minutes for their March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I hope that we accept the minutes of March twenty-first.
Yeah. We have a second?
I second.
Okay, I read the second. The discussion? All in favor? All right, no correspondence tonight. Item, my public participation for items not listed on the agenda.
Public what?
Any public participation tonight?
Only online.
We're not exciting enough.
Someone says there's a board of final approval of the budget tonight.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good crowd. I read that. Good, that's real fun. All right, staff report, discussion. Number one, potential regulation amendments.
Are you?
Yeah. There's so many people.
We're going to have you two rush it out in here in a minute.
Actually, I have it down. Sorry, didn't mean to disrupt.
Now that's, we understand.
Are you excited?
Potential regulation amendments, Mike and Chris.
Yeah, so in the, towards the back of the packet, you'll see a table that I put together. So we talked about the codification. We talked about kind of how we wanted to go through things. So what I did is I just threw together the things that we talked about. Chris and I looked through sort of our ticker file, things that we have already discussed. And these are the, sort of the big ones, if you will. There's a lot of stuff that if we were going top to bottom, we would try to pick up. But if we were going to be trying to make changes ahead of codification, these would be the minimum that we would want at least reviewed.
Are these in order, what we tackle first or?
Um, not really. They're sort of in order when they came up. Outdoor dining, that was a legislative change from the twenty-twenty-one legislative session. We cannot, can't require anything but an administrative approval for outdoor dining when it's associated with a restaurant. Minimum floor area, we can't dictate how big a house has to be. Home occupations, we've talked about. Character is another one from twenty-twenty-one session for twenty-twenty-two, which basically says we can't use community character as a reason to approve or deny an application because community character is a completely subjective, right? An engineer cannot design a building to meet your standards for community character, and that's, that's the trick there. So we would want to remove that reference from the regs. We sort of talked about accessory dwellings.
I, I know that has to come out, but explain something to me. You go to like Glassland area, McDonald's looks different than standard McDonald's. You go to like some of the other towns or a dollar count or yada, yada. We can't require that anymore.
You can require it. You just can't say the building that you've designed isn't, isn't within the character of Wilmington.
I get that because character was a euphemism to exclude things and everything, and that's what the state legislature was getting at. You just something you don't like, laundry, you just use the character word and nix it.
Which is why, that's why I included the language I did when we approved that pad site with the solar.
Okay.
We wanted it to be designed synonymous with buildings, similar buildings recently approved. So you can still look at design standards and say we want split face facade and we want windows in them.
That's, that's what I'm getting at because I know you as a comment to say when we did the Dallas, you know, that I think made it better. Some of the things that.
Right, and I presented that as suggestions.
Yes.
That the, the builder, I was, they were, they were taking notice and they made it happen.
And as long as this doesn't, a lot of that stuff, the cupola, the split face facade, the fold windows, it's not huge money. So if that means they can put it in and they're agreeable and that'll get it through.
Yeah.
They're fine with that.
So we can say those things, we just can't call it rural character. Now, we do use rural character in our plan of conservation development, so we have to strength those, should we?
Um, it's an evaluation criteria. So really, the issue is within the regs because you use the regs to determine approve or deny.
I see.
P O C D is not.
Is the guidance more of a higher level guidance, so we can probably be a little more flexible.
And the easiest thing is we could swap out the word character with neighborhood characteristic.
Some character, yeah, there you go.
There's other things you can just swap it with.
That makes sense.
But we want to just make that.
I understand nuance.
Accessory dwelling units, like I said, we've talked about. We, we opted out, so we're not under the gun like we were. Signage, we've talked about creating business friend, more business friendly and content neutral sign regulations. I have actually most of this as a start to draft it. But it's, you know, we've got to move the regs significantly from where they are now to get them to be compliant.
That's one we've been talking about for years. Probably be fixed once.
Yeah. The S D Z, we know that needs to be reviewed. That's going to probably take its own track. Commercial lighting, we've talked a lot about actually codifying into the regs this requirement for dark sky design standards because we, we asked for it, but the regs don't actually require it. So we should, we should put that in our design standards so that when folks are designing sites, we, we have that expectation. And then driveway standards, we have, our driveway standards are not, are not great. And one of the things that I've been sort of talking about is our new fire marshal, Trevor Gantic, works for Talon Fire Department and I work in Talon. Talon has very specifically worded regulations for how you design driveways. So if they're more than two hundred feet, they need a forty-foot truck turnaround at the end. If they're more than four hundred feet, there needs to be a bypass if two trucks can pass.
We have something similar, though.
We only require a turnaround at the end, but we don't require a bypass and we don't say this, get into the specifics of the size.
We don't, huh?
No. We talk about a flat design. I don't know what the current status of like the fire department equipment is. I don't know if it changes based upon what house is responding, but.
We just went to a call on a road and the driveway, we had to walk up. As they backed a vehicle up and we had to walk up. It was a medical call, I will say. As the officers who were there were going, there's only two trucks in this whole town out of the six fire trucks that can get up this driveway.
Yeah.
Because you can't make the turns, like the big new truck down at the south station couldn't get in the first twenty feet before something would happen.
So what is the average weight?
It, it's not so much weight, it's length.
Weight and length.
Length and length.
Yeah, so Talon requires design for a forty-foot truck.
Yeah.
Which we don't have. I've been just.
PT one thirteen might be close.
But we also, like, we have a weight design of seventy thousand pounds. So like, these are all things that I don't, I don't know, but.
Tankers, the bigger trucks would be close or more.
And I, I also believe we don't have a statement on grade. So like, it's between ten and fifteen, it needs to be paid. Under ten, it can be stoned. Fifteen is the max, right? We don't have, within residential driveway standards. So we have a lot of people building, you know, like really long driveways and we don't have necessarily teeth to make sure that we can get a truck, which is a problem.
And if you're building a big house, you need to be able to get Yukon or Talon's big towers, ladder trucks in, which need their own.
Right, so this just came up because the home occupation that this commission approved on Talon Turnpike, Terry Eccles, she's a doctor and she's got her house with the home occupation, so that's kind of moving that through. That's, I don't know, eight hundred feet off the road and it's like this and it's like this. So luckily, because he's, they have two, they have the lower parking area for, and then they have their driveway. So there, it should be pretty easy to get a truck in there because they can get it all turned around and they gave me a plan that shows they can do a thirty foot. But, um, yeah, it's still something that I think we want to make sure we have in there so that we don't, we don't have some obligation to get a truck in there and they've designed it in such a way that we can't.
And also, possibly the width, you know, you need, the newer trucks are all full road width. They're ten feet wide. So you need to be able to swing at ten feet.
Right, and our width requirement is twelve feet.
And this comes down to new construction or putting in new?
New drivers, yep.
Not like if somebody comes in to get repaving.
No, 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 no.
All right. We'll just be careful too, because we get a number of dirt roads. And I don't know if some of the fire trucks could put on my dirt roads.
Oh, yeah, I can, been there, done that. A little sketchy, but you can get it.
Yeah.
You don't want to meet anybody.
Trees actually, don't want to grow.
Yeah.
Only move in, in the roads.
Yeah, I agree with new stuff.
Just, you know, don't over specify.
Yeah.
I was like, no. The weight goes, are you saying that the driveway would have to be, driveway would have to accommodate like a seventy thousand pound?
That's our regs now, just say, you know, process with base with this, with that and, you know, have all these specific design standards and say they shall be constructed to withstand a weight of seventy thousand pounds. I can't find an instance where that reg was actually ever enforced, like. But, and like the property over here is not designed to those standards. It was an existing driveway. So we have this flat seventy thousand design standard and people are just putting in gravel driveways, which are fine. Like they'll, they'll, they'll be okay. So we're acquiring things we haven't actually asked for, then we need certain things that are not in the regs.
It's more the apron on the end to spinning things.
Which gets the other point, which is not an us thing, but we talked about it in town hall. Our regs reference multiple places of drive over and it's, we don't have one. Our regs say, I shall get a driveway permit per the driveway ordinance. There is no driveway ordinance. There's never been one. I also think it references like a sexually oriented businesses ordinance, which was never adopted. Adult entertainment or whatever.
We had this place here years ago, smoking ladder didn't last long.
Yeah, but I don't, there's, I don't believe that there's an ordinance on the books. I've not seen it. I've looked for it.
That's why.
So our regs point to these ordinances that don't exist. Which is what the codification is intended to do.
Right, right. So then, you know, I, I know we've had the fire marshal look at driveways when we did, you mentioned Elmond Road. I think those shared driveways. He looks everywhere. They have turnouts. They, we talked about that. They had to go so far. They had to put turnouts in. That was part of the conditions of.
For a subdivision.
Because that's what it is. It's the subdivision legs. But for a single family home, they were a little weak. That makes, okay, that, that brings it home.
And I can have Trevor go out and look at that property on Talon Turnpike.
Who's Trevor?
He's the new fire marshal.
Fire marshal, he replaced.
Oh, okay.
And he, but if he's going out there, it's, it's at the end. And he, and he, but if he's going out there, it's, it's at the end of the process when the driveway's in, but that.
Right, right, right. No, no, you're right. It was subdivisions. That's, that's, that's where that.
All right, so that makes some sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah, all right. All right, well, good stuff. Someone raised like outdoor dining. All right.
Do all these things. We have public hearings and all that if we change.
You can do it one by one, or we can workshop a few and then have a public hearing on the few sections.
I would do a couple of it.
Yeah.
Unless something's major. If you take S D Z, well, yeah, that, that's gonna be a.
Right. Yeah, so that one, well, like I said, that one may align with what the E D C is doing for this strategic plan. So that'll be some time. So that is.
And then you have the commission bylaws.
Yes. So I put those back on here because we had talked about it. And I just wanted to kind of bring it back up to either just give you guys the opportunity to review them again and we can go through them. I, I guess that I think it's important for us to have something and these are the bare minimum. It doesn't, this does not really do anything that you aren't currently doing. This was basically written to align with your current procedures. And I think I mentioned previously the reason why I, I wrote this is because the way that we wanted to deal with election of officers and that type of thing. Normally they have to do it, you know, with the. Sorry, I just put in here. Intention. Session.
Six years.
Well, that comes right out of the, what we've already got.
Again, just the whole thing with alternatives, we went off through this stuff in our class. Now they, they're great detail about some of these things.
Yeah, so. Shall be elected regular, remember vacant scenes. During the first regular meeting, following each biennial election, the commission shall hold an organizational meeting for purposes of. So that, so it's not an annual.
Here's a good one. Item B, under rights and powers of members, discussion on matters after motion that are made, second, is restricted voting.
Yeah, the other thing that I think is helpful because we had a lot of people.
So that means an unseated alternate.
Right.
Yeah.
But a lot of people ask questions during the warehouse application because they don't know your process. So if we have this online, it gives them a little bit of understanding of how the meetings go.
Sure. Which I thought was a big deal during that, that people did not understand the process.
No, and this doesn't speak to all of it, but it gives them a little bit of an idea of how you conduct.
Yeah. I did notice under a four point five order of business, you don't have presence to speak or public comment. I don't know if that needs to be in there under, right, order of business.
Yeah, because people don't understand why we don't have like a presence to speak at the beginning of our meetings. Yeah, come on and everything. And there's a.
That needs to be on there or is that? I can add it. Yep, I can add it.
I think it's important to have it.
Is it better to have in the beginning of the meetings?
So here's what can happen. You put it in the beginning of the meeting and we got a public hearing coming up. Then somebody all of a sudden starts talking. And people do it all the time. They start talking about things that are on the agenda. They start, they're going on about the, what's in the context of the meeting. Now you've kind of contaminated that a little bit.
I agree.
I, I, I don't. I think it's better to have it like down at the bottom, you know, like you do it. That way the public hearing said done.
Right.
And, you know, that way if somebody goes off the rails, it's easier to reel it in than, than, than right at the beginning, set the stage.
At the end, you can just. You can't really.
You can't put the comment back.
Yeah. That's right. So, so you allow the public hearing to happen. Then you go and that way if somebody slips up and starts talking about something that was already talked about, you correct them and whatever, but there's gonna take it back at the beginning before anybody's even.
Yeah, I don't, all of the reading I've done through the Connecticut State statutes, seems that planning and zoning meetings are the most regulated, even compared to the zoning board of appeals. I, I think even they have a little bit more flexibility in their, in their procedures than.
And you think about even the larger things, like a public hearing that's like for a large item, almost always is a lawyer sitting here.
Yeah, right.
So that, that it's, it's important to keep it.
The times we've gotten into trouble have been procedural, not, not by our votes, not by our decisions, but.
That's ninety percent of it.
Procedures, because we violate something that, what is it? If you're, if the facts are wrong, hammer the laws. If the law's wrong, hammer the facts. So it was one of those things there.
Yeah, I don't want to be getting dragged into court for any procedural stuff. So, I mean, this is not a formal document in that we don't have a public hearing. It doesn't require some big protracted process to amend it. We're not, it's also not some legally binding statutory, no, but so.
Interesting one, like the chairman.
That's practice.
Every year is two years.
So that would align right with your election of officers.
It had to be nominated with a majority vote for it, so, okay, makes sense.
Then the, the next step, just because it's a commission document, if, if you thought it was, you know, good enough, I would send it over to Haller and say for them to review, just so that we have their eyes on it. Get any comments and, or if anything jumps out at them, and if they say, well, you know, we realize there's a problem with this, then, you know, we can look at it. I modeled this off of other bylaws that I've either written or, or had interaction with. One of the things that I also included based upon our discussion, you'll see at the, under adjournment, time of adjournment of all regular special meetings shall be no later than ten thirty P M unless this rule is waived by unanimous. A lot of commissions do that. They, they sort of establish a curfew. You had talked about ten thirty, which is why I put it there. You can make that whatever you want.
Does anyone here really want to be here after ten thirty?
No.
Ten thirty is a pretty good meeting in my opinion.
That's three hours.
It necessitates that it gives us three hours of sitting here and then, and if it's something that important, we can always pick it up in the next one.
But I do like setting the public expectations. I think that has a lot of value.
And plus, you know, like, we, we will continue public hearings. If it's something we haven't heard, everybody who did it, we did it over the summer. And that was worth hearing.
Yeah, absolutely right.
So we're gonna add public comment in here on the list by order of business.
Yes, I will add that. All right.
I like section four point nine with the five thousand dollar salary.
Yeah, I put that one right in there.
Yeah, I'll see it.
I, I got no more cards to play with border finance. So if you want to add that in, you're gonna have to go yourself. So what, is somebody leaving? Christopher's leaving?
Yeah, so I was, I was gonna have him talk. He's, he's in a, he decides to have work-life balance. So he's in like an adult soccer league and they moved his game out, which is why he was virtual. So I just noticed that he popped off, but he is, his last day with us is actually Thursday because he's, because Friday's off. He's going to D O T.
Is he?
Good for him.
Well, good for him.
He's going to D O T.
That's a step up.
I mean, it depends on who you ask. I don't know.
Yeah, a big job like that. I mean, that, that's for, 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 you know, he's a, he's a young guy starting off the world.
Strategic planning department, I think.
Oh, good for him. So was this a leg up for him? This, this job here that?
The, the, working here or going to D O T?
I mean, working here.
This was his first job out of college.
Yeah, so that, that was good.
So he cut his teeth and.
I'm, I'm sure you gave him a good, good tutelage. So what, what's that mean to you now? Now you got more shit to do.
The position has been posted, so we've had, I think, some calls, some people looking for applications and stuff, so we'll. It's actually kind of a good time because college graduations and sort of, when that sort of flux.
Good luck.
We'll figure it out and, you know, we've had a pretty good.
They've all got certified.
Yeah, yes.
Last year also.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's good days. He's working his way up.
It's hard. We don't carry a salary that really puts people in a position where they can stay for a long. It got better when we moved the benefits from my position to that position because, like, when Emily first started, they were paying for benefits out of pocket. So they're, they were at like a three quarter time or maybe, and, and paying hundreds of dollars a month for insurance, which took the salary to like twenty something thousand, like you just can't live on. So when, because I don't take benefits from the town, so we took the benefits from the position, the zoning agent position, we applied it to that position. So it made it more livable because that money went back into their pocket.
Sure.
But it's still under forty thousand.
Yeah, that's not, not, not in this.
Yeah, that's not a this.
After tax and union dues?
That was too bad.
So you get folks that need the experience, which is totally fine because then they haven't learned how to do it the wrong way. And we, you know, we teach them, but they, when they.
Stay with it. They can't sustain it.
When they start to build the resume, they want to move on with their life and.
As this.
Every two years.
That's right.
Yeah.
A lot of other options. Mentor for him?
He, I don't know, I don't know if you, if you, if you hit the lottery or you pulled a short stick and having to deal with it, sort of the last year has been, he started right at the, coming out of COVID and then we went right into the warehouse from six months.
Well, that's one way to cut your teeth.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's right. He's an understand that life is not smooth sailing all the time.
Right.
I, I, I like what he's led. Just to wrap this up, I like what you did here. This is good, even like the procedures.
Yep.
Very good. And we generally follow Robert's rules of order. We do a little leeway, have straight leads if you want to adhere. Which, which is good too. Robert's rules are very useful, but.
No, yeah, they don't apply. Exactly, for sure.
All right.
So let, if you want, I'll make it come out some of those changes. I'll send it off to Rich and Ken.
Take a look at. All right. Next move is it's eight thirteen P M, meetings are.